All the planning commission meeting order we stamp in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united out indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Row house please.
Yes.
Oh yes.
Edward Keller.
Here.
Whitey Simon here. Christine Holcomb.
Here.
Harold Bane.
Here.
Mark Gorshard.
Here.
Don Fozell.
Here.
You are.
Robert Useley.
Here.
Keith Bell.
Here.
Kathy Ashweiter.
I'm here, thank you. Okay, item number four is amendments to agenda.
I do believe that we have to address under unfinished business the public hearing that is still open regarding Blue Horseshoes.
Blue horseshoes.
Oh, Blue Horseshoes. Horizon sounds better to me.
Sorry, that's not it.
Anyhow, we need to put that on our unfinished business.
So we have the item B.
Item B.
Just keep going, right? Hurry. Need support for that?
All supported.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, amendment. Item B, okay. Item number five is approval of minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 28, 2019 meeting as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and it's approved. Item number six is new business and under item number six is SALU extension request for the address of 5108 Point Trumbull Road. Eric.
Good evening, so in this special approval land use section, there's a requirement, administrative requirement that if no constructions begun within 12 months or proceeded meaningfully towards completion, that the special approval land use expires after that 12 months. However, the building department typically notifies applicants when they're nearing this deadline and they're allowed to petition for an extension and justifying that extension. And the applicants here, I believe, briefly addressed that. So that's something you're allowed to do by the zoning ordinances to extend the special land use approval if no constructions taken place. Once the use is established, then it will run with the land continually as long as it's in compliance, but if nothing's begun after your approval, then they need to request the extension, so that's why that is before you.
Question, is the extension, I'm sorry, is the extension 12 months as well, same as the original approval?
It says the planning commission may waive or extend the period of time in which the permit is to expire if satisfied that the owner developer is maintaining a good faith intention to proceed. It does not give a specific time for that.
I know in the past on other extensions, we've done another 12 months, but that's just something we've done in the past. Any other questions? Is the applicant here or representative?
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah. Mike from Denny's Liquor, the project is a little bit expensive, so I would like to get an extension for that, please.
Okay.
Are you changing the plan at all? No, sir. Okay.
Is 12 months enough? Is 12 months enough?
Yes, sir.
12 months enough?
Yes, sir.
Eric, did we double check and see if this is the same, is this the same plan or was this submitted by almost you?
We have, we have reviewed it. I believe it is the same plan. Cindy stated it's the same plan, that there's no changes proposed to the site and that procedurally it should just be stamped again, just to restart that.
So we need to restamp these ones?
That's what Cindy said, yeah.
Okay, because I don't know on the first set of plans if we, you know, sometimes we stamp, you know, conditions. I don't personally know if we did.
But I remember we stipulated conditions prior and in recent.
I don't have a clear memory on that.
Could be wrong. I think that was a fair attempt, because we did stipulate conditions, he came back and brought them, he did it.
Right.
Was it driveways or something?
Because it was about the front of the store, because it was a gas station, it was changed the position.
Changed down.
And there was something with the, yeah, one of them down, one of the two.
I didn't know.
So I believe this is an accurate statement.
I know they did make the change you have done.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it was stamped here to last that.
Okay.
So I thought it was a mistake to make. Before he done this.
I'm here, it says the date, the original date was 5/25/18 and then 6/18 per planning.
Okay.
Would that have been like an amendment probably, according to what we had stipulated?
I don't know, I probably should have asked Cindy which was here.
In any case though, if we re-stamp this plan, this would supersede what is in this right now.
Yeah, because we got, we get rid of the entrance right here, we put the entrance in the back and one off M29, because he has two off the side right here.
Right.
Yeah. Because they changed the front, because the front right now, you walk this way. The new entrance is on the side of the building now.
Okay.
Yeah, I know he did those changes you are talking about.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Anyone here to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the extension request JCP 2018-0035108 Point Trumbull Site Plan. For how long? For 12 months. I'll second that.
That was Mark and Keith. For, well, I would like to express my thanks for, well, spoken motion, short enough so I can put it all.
In one line?
Yes.
You sure you don't want to add more to it?
No, 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 thank you.
I thought I'd make it short.
We have a motion.
Everybody understand the motion?
Yep.
All right, row house please.
Keith Bell.
Yes.
Edward Keller.
Yes.
Tom Fozell.
Aye.
Robert Useley.
Yes.
Whitey Simon, yes. Mark Gorshard.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
That's the case.
This is an old one.
Uh-huh.
I'll cross that one out, that's an old one.
And whom did I miss?
Harold Bane.
Harold Bane.
Let me just write my name on a little scribble.
Sorry, Harold.
It's all right. Temporary.
And Kathy Schmiker.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion approved. Give us one second, we'll get you happy, okay?
Okay, thank you ma'am.
Depression's on. So, what's today, 25th?
I'll give you that.
We need your signature.
Okay. We have a question?
By applicant.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I need one more.
Two more, please.
Okay.
There you go. And this is the last one, you get to keep that one.
I get to keep this?
Yep, you get to keep that one.
Okay, thank you very much.
And they go into the handbells.
Thank you, Harold. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, and we're gonna move on to item number seven, which is unfinished business. We have A, which is the boathouses that we talked about last month.
Eric. So I passed out the memo that we received last month, there's no changes to it. Last month we talked about just kind of thinking about boathouses on their own, neighbors that have boathouses, just general issues, and there wasn't really any direction as far as changes that should be made to the text, so we're just bringing that up again, if that's something you want to pursue or not. Boathouses are considered accessory structures, and those are addressed in the zoning ordinance, and the standard that we focus on is the side, the open sides requirements. This is for a couple of reasons, to maintain views from properties and from neighbors, for ice buildup can damage sides if they come too close to the water, so there's a couple of reasons for those open size requirements, and those are, some look common in waterfront communities, so that was something that we focused on as far as thinking about if any changes should be made. So we could just discuss that again tonight, get any direction you have, or any thoughts on the issue.
It looks like you covered it pretty good, but aren't they more like covered boat lifts now instead of boathouses? Wouldn't that be? But then with a lift included houses. Well, they would be two separate things, right? Because you got the existing ones.
Are you saying like without roofs?
No, no.
I thought at the last meeting, obviously anybody jumping here, that we have a conflict between accessory buildings, boathouses, and the enclosed, because like right now, I remember, I think it was Rod who said at the last meeting, you could have a boathouse with a second story enclosed.
Right.
So we need, it sounded like we needed to get those conflicts resolved, thank you.
Yes.
Am I remembering that correctly?
You're right.
So with that in mind, I've also in the last month noticed, we supposedly can't have any enclosed boathouses, you could have that drop down pipe.
Right.
I can say in my neighborhood, it's not on the riverside, but it's definitely on the canalsides, there's brand new ones that are definitely boathouses, there are totally two story enclosed boathouses.
Right.
So I don't think, I don't know which way to go with this, but I think right now, anybody coming into our township and wanting to do this, I think we have a conflict going on with accessory buildings, boathouses, and then boat lifts if that's, yeah. So I'm thinking that maybe we can request our planners to, see if I'm correct on that?
I think what you were describing was there's a little bit of a conflict between the low maximum height, that was 15 feet, and allowing a second story.
But that was on commercial, not residential, I'm strictly talking residential.
So the accessory dwelling units is a little bit increased, so if you have the apartment or dwelling unit above, as part of a boathouse, you could go up to 20 feet, so those are kind of separate, they don't always come into play. Depends if it's a unit at that second story, or if you're talking about a deck, then that's back down to the 15 feet.
Well, I agree with Kathy, because I see the boathouses, they're a lot higher than 20 feet.
Oh heck yeah.
Some of them are almost supposed to push in 29, 30 foot.
And they're beautiful, don't get me wrong, I know, that's not what I'm thinking about, but it makes no sense to have ordinances that either not going to be followed, or they just make no sense in our community, because that's not what our community wants, and we're here to try to make our community what the people want, so I'm not exactly sure what happened, obviously somebody must have went to the building department, got approval for, these are brand new structures. So it just, to me, seems not very useful or helpful, and how do you tell somebody yes and somebody no, because if you look at what the ordinance says at this point, probably shouldn't have got that proposed boathouse.
Well, you can guess at the height of the structure that is sitting next to my house, when you look at me as I'm walking my dog, that's unfinished, and if they put a roof on that.
Oh, that's true.
That'll be way up there.
That was not one I thought, I'll put you on, that's true.
Right. It's also on the.
Again, it's on the canal, it's not on the riverside, but who says they couldn't do it?
There's a lot of different places these things could be put, in different, you know.
Well, they talking about existing or new builds?
These are brand new.
I thought this addressed existing.
I think covered everything.
I think we covered it all, yeah.
So what happened if we just don't do anything?
I think we still have a conflict going on.
And we, I think we all know too that this is all easily defeated.
Say it one more time, sorry.
Easily defeated.
So on, you know, there's Gabriel, for instance. So on the end of page one, top of the second page, we are proposing to increase the height for commercial and industrial.
I don't think anybody had a problem once with that, or it was the residential that all of a sudden came to our attention.
Would it, if it is, because I don't think most people are concerned about losing view of the canal.
Right.
So is that something that?
I don't know, I hate to say that.
I would argue that, sure, I would too.
But is that something that we could look at, is having one for canal and one for lake and riverfront?
Well, I don't know, it could be a intrusive structure, maybe somebody might like it.
We could ask them to come back with proposals, because this is, we're just in the talking stage right now, we, obviously it was brought to our attention that, started with a commercial, I think is really where it started, with raising the height of the enclosed boathouse, but then it was brought to our attention, and I want to say from the last meeting, it was because, it might have been Rod who was meeting with the new building inspector, and there's applications coming in to do these enclosed boathouses, and it came to their attention that we have a conflict, is the word I'm gonna use.
It's mostly the open size requirement is what applicants are bringing up, not as much the height, that's more of a secondary.
But right now.
They're completely closed down.
They're closed.
Which we're not proposing to change, but that is like an ongoing.
I'm not saying we should or shouldn't change it, but right now, is I'm looking just in my small neighborhood, brand new, and ways pulling in on another one if they continue, yeah, they're on the canals and they're in the back, but they're way taller than the height form right now, and they're totally enclosed boathouses, it's not a garage, there's no doubt it's not a garage. So, and I'm not one way or the other, I'm just thinking.
We gotta be consistent.
We should be consistent, and we shouldn't be conflicting, and if you have people coming in who are trying to use our ordinances, and like, they want their enclosed boathouses, then they say no. Well, why are you saying no? Because you just gave three of them out. So I think maybe we really need to come up with some different options, whether it's canal, whether it's the river, I mean.
I think it might, they're not going on waterfront, whether it's canal or lake, it's waterfront, it's waterfront. You've got canals that lead to the lake, because they're on a canal.
And that's what I'm talking about.
Does that mean their view, it's okay to obstruct their view?
I'm not saying one way or the other, I'm just saying we need to look at it.
Well, do we need to look at the other, whatever is conflicting with the boathouse language?
Which is the accessory buildings.
Because I'm looking at, I'm looking at what we received from our planners, and under 8B, it says, in all districts, in residential districts, such boathouses may exceed the area of the principal building.
Yes.
Do we really want boathouses larger than the homes?
Well, like we said, there was some of them, they had garages in them.
Yeah. I just think we have, I have a mouse, I'll say that.
What we can do too is maybe just create some graphics based on the couple sections that address boathouses, that might help the discussion as far as height and garages and open sides, just some 3D.
So we can see what we're talking about.
Yeah, some side by side graphics of buildings, but that like totally conceptual boathouses, but maybe that might be.
And a nice spreadsheet. Height, width, depth, windows.
And I don't know if it really came to our attention until the building department who uses this, and with the new building inspectors, like we have a problem.
Yeah, we didn't, until we met with them, we didn't realize that.
We didn't, we, at least I didn't for sure, I don't think anybody else here realized we had a conflict, mass type thing going, and now that's been brought to our attention, we probably should not ignore it.
What if you, what if you had an enclosed boathouse, but you had to get permission from like so many neighbors around you?
That proposed, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
All I remember.
I'm open to options.
Just an idea.
All I remember is that the one boathouse off our orchid there, just a little north, that built it, enclosed it, and was forced to tear it down.
Tear it down.
Tear it down. So you can't just enclose a boathouse and put it up there.
Did it on like a nail?
Two stories.
Well, I was saying, if you had to get, just an idea, like a temple in that immediate area, just as you would for like the horseshoe, blue horseshoe or whatever.
Well, this is a discussion right now, obviously we have to probably wander around a little bit, but maybe you have a little more clearer direction, what we're trying to figure out between the accessory building, boathouses, enclosed, non-enclosed.
Like a simple boat lift out front shouldn't be a real problem, you know?
And.
In this, in this community, if you're underwater, your boathouse is a way of life.
Yeah.
And when you drive around the area, you have a pretty good mix of enclosed and non-enclosed, so I mean, if somebody wants to put up a enclosed boathouse, and you already have them in the area.
Unfinished business.
How would you tell that individual that they couldn't do that?
My answer.
And are we doing that mostly because we don't want them to enclose it and make living quarters out of it?
Well, before this came to my attention, or our attention last, it's been for a long time, because our neighbor three doors down, he had an enclosed, very old enclosed boathouse, he could not rebuild an enclosed boathouse, he had to do the wealth and drop 30 feet down, it didn't matter, and it had probably been there 30 years.
Oh, there are. That's not fair.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, it's not something new, but it seems that we've come to.
It's part of our character of our community.
I'm not saying it's fair or not, here, right now it's come to our attention that we do have some conflict, that's going on.
I mean, some of those include.
Opening a house.
Oh yeah.
They are.
And some of them do.
Keep in mind too, we don't have basements or anything, you know?
Fucking bitch, you're good. It's maybe pull a hole.
So Eric, do you have a better idea, maybe?
Yeah, I think some graphics would be helpful, I think we just, you know, like starting way more from the beginning with.
Maybe history, a little bit of.
Not as much techs.
But scrap everything, your boathouses, you're going over the DEQ, because the DEQ has the rights over the water, and they're gonna, they're not, they're not gonna lie to you, no, they're not gonna lie to you, put a closed boathouse, on any river that is in front of a view, they're not gonna do it.
I've been shot down twice now. Some of the complaints are based on that, the DEQ permit is not, there's no check off for local zoning, it just, as a footnote, you have to be local zoning, but people think they have the DEQ permit, and they think that's their only approval, so when it comes to building, they don't.
So we should.
Oh, the DEQ permit was.
We should get their standards and then apply it to what's going on.
Thank you for that for us.
So let's do that.
Well, and I think part of the problem too, from what I remember in our last discussion, was about using garage doors in the boathouses.
There are two of them right across from my property, Mrs. Dorris.
Well, they built one on the canal that I'm on, and did not put the doors on until after.
Of course.
And it was never addressed.
Maybe our planners could check in for us, DEQ, as they're all pointed out.
Yeah, because they're not, DEQ, I know somebody that built a brand new oyster, and they can only come three foot out from the top, because you cannot block the view. That was right on South Channel, that was a brand new permit. Now, when I had my house next to Kathy, I got a boathouse permit, I couldn't understand how I had a boathouse permit, and it never went up, and they just.
Okay, hold, I'm sorry, Harold, to interrupt, the gentleman in the very back, sir, we can hear you all the way up here, hold on, okay? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Harold.
I mean, I, when I lived by Kathy, on South Channel Boulevard, Green Drive, they gave me a boathouse permit. My question to them was, how come you gave me one, but you're not gonna give my neighbor one to put her right on the front? And they said, because you live in a rear canal, not blocking anybody's view. But I was blocking the view, I was blocking the Warners, I was blocking the guy next to me, and everybody else down there, because the house is gonna put up a huge boathouse by the end of the movie.
But the fishing was good in my house.
Yeah, the fishing was great, but I got a permit to put a boathouse in the front of my property.
Actually, where you did used to live, you see the boathouse they have done, is another one I missed.
Ah, you know what, I'm not even getting started on that.
Okay. That was a really big one, yeah.
I don't know how he even got the permit.
I guess the bottom line to this is we need.
We need more information.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Did we give enough direction?
I give too much.
Everything.
I think basically, DEQ, we'd like to know what their standards are, pull together a summary of where.
Different materials, graphics of river canal, ion.
You cross-reference with destructive view too.
Oh yeah.
Right, that's, you know, that's what it's all about, that's what it's all about to begin with. Sir. And, you know, in Clay Township, according to everybody here, your mailbox is in front of your house.
Right.
All right?
Right.
My mailbox is 490 feet from my house, so technically I had all that canal frontage in between, but yet that was in front of my house, and we allow that. That was another thing I couldn't understand either. Boathouse in front of my house.
We have a strange area.
Yes, we do.
That's probably the most helpful thing to this.
Yes.
I'm not gonna argue that one. All right, I bet you we can have some more information, maybe next meeting, we'll see how this goes, okay? Thank you, Eric. Item 7B is, I'm gonna call it the Blue Horseshoes, and our planners put together a little synopsis.
A memorandum.
A memorandum, and Whitey's gonna read that, okay?
This memo is intended to serve as an update on the status of the project at 7317 Dyke Road, also known as the Blue Horseshoe Development. The public hearing is still open. As of the date of this memo, our office has not received any updated plans for review or comment from the applicants. They must submit new materials by the end of township business hours on Wednesday, October 2nd, 2019, in order to be considered for the October 23rd, 2019 agenda. The following items are needed in order to satisfy the request made by the planning commission at the April 24th, 2019 meeting. Written responses or open of permits from MPEQ, Army Corps in response to boat traffic assessment noted below, MDOT in response to vehicle traffic study noted below, Building, Fire, Police, Traffic Studies Corp. approved by MDOT vehicles, Army Corps boats, Gipper Webster, both, update site plan if any changes have been made. My remarks would indicate that as of today, that was five months ago.
Are they aware of this? Did they get this too? Do they know?
I can tell you that on Tuesday, September 24th, Brian Rowe, if I'm saying his name correctly, submitted an email to Rod and Matt, saying, we are working with MDOT, they have requested that we move curbs from the driveway entrance, this change will affect three pages of our current site plan drawings, on, I think he meant on file with the Clay Township planning board. Can we just make copies of the three reflective pages, or do we need to be cleaning instead of drawings with an update? On Wednesday, September 25th, Matt responded to Brian, it's a little bit different than what Whitey just read, due to the numerous submittals and versions of this plan we've reviewed, clean copies of the full site plan package are preferred. Additionally, please ensure the dates on all of the plans match in our current, and he gives an example, per the township review. This helps everyone reviewing and tracking this project know that they are looking at the most current plans. Lastly, please provide our copies of all the materials requested by the planning commission. Lastly, please provide our copies of all the materials requested by the Planning Commission, which are provided below as a reminder, which basically goes through the list and what we agree with Whitey just did, okay? Um, update the site plan if any changes have been made. As you indicated, the site plans have been made to several sheets, please provide a short summary memo slash letter detailing the changes made since your last submittal and what pages have been changed. And that was the last correspondence that I was in the chain of, between the applicant and our planners.
So they're working to submit that full set by Wednesday for October, so that's the last.
So the applicant's very well aware between what the email was and what this memorandum was.
We're worried that they insert pages, there'll be discrepancies with other sheets if there were changes for MDOT, but they didn't update, you know, landscaping plan or something like that, so we want the full set to be clean when you look at that again.
So I guess that's the update, this particular point on that project, which means our next meeting is October twenty-third. And Whitey already read in that the information needs to be submitted by October second.
Seconds.
Everybody understand where we're at at this point with this ad?
Are they doing any work over there, or?
They, they allowed to be doing?
I can say they're doing work, I don't know if they're allowed or not, because we're not involved in the seawall, which is what appears to be going on at the moment, so I don't, yeah.
Doesn't it sometimes seem that, uh, we're kind of put on a bad bird, so to speak, as far as to what's being allowed to happen and not happen?
I don't really think we have an ability to stop them on seawall, they get their permits from those agencies. I mean, at this particular point, this is, as Whitey mentioned, been going on for six months. Um, we don't have to keep doing what we're doing, obviously, so, we just wanted everybody on the same page at this particular point, and we'll be adjourned, or postponed, I guess we should say, till October twenty-third, and we can see where we go on October twenty-third?
Well, I just heard that they have to resubmit plans, especially if things have changed, and if I drive by there and look at the seawall construction, the character of the island that was first shown on our initial plans has changed, and probably, maybe even for the better. I don't know that. But the point is, to have the tremendous changes on the property, we have not received any of the studies, and my concern, of course, would be MDOT vehicles study in October doesn't mean much when it concerns traffic in May, June, July, and August. And similarly, with the boats, the boats are coming out of the water right now, and so checking the traffic, they have to be in front of essentially marinas where the boats are being pulled out. So I don't know what we're getting, which can't be my concern or any of our concerns, because we have to understand that they have to provide these documents to us. My first thought would be, unless by October second, we have not received all of these documents that have been requested duly notarized and/or signed and/or certified, whatever we need, I would propose that we bring up a simple motion on October twenty-third, and that would be to close the public hearing. I think six months is long enough for an applicant to respond to our requests for data, especially if he has plans to build such a wonderful development.
Well, at this point, we're just trying to update everybody who's here on the board and maybe who's present in the audience, so that's truly what all we were trying to do today, and let the public and everyone else know the date that the submittals need to be from the applicant, which was right into the record, and that our next meeting is October twenty-third. So as far as that goes, um, we can then deal on October twenty-third with what we have to deal with.
So I'd like to move then that we keep the public hearing open until October twenty-third.
Through October twenty-third.
Through.
Well, it would continue or whatever we do in October. At our next meeting, how's that for twenty-third? We'll go that way. Need support?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion, everybody understand?
I understand six months.
Okay, we got there too. Okay, go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll see what happens.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, moving on to item number eight is Planning Consultants' Report, Master Plan PowerPoint.
So it's not gonna be a wall PowerPoint, but it's just printout, and then I passed out. So this is a first look at demographics that would be included in the master plan update. Um, so the first chapter and the first part of the update that, that we take on typically is demographics, community facilities, natural features. Um, that'll be generally the first chapter, you kind of, it sets a nice baseline for where you end up going with goals and more visioning later on in the plan, so you kind of get a handle on where you're at today. So there's obviously about a lot of natural features, resources in this area, so we're gonna, that'll require some work with RE, the DNR, County Recreation, and the, um, some of the surrounding communities recreation plans, which there's some good info to pull from. And then also, the current master plan has some good information on community history, so we'll draw from that. Historical society, we'll engage in some other resources, generally more land use and development related, not maybe more personal history items. So, um, at the October meeting, we're gonna present this full existing conditions chapter for you in draft form, and we do that prior to the first open house. And we're looking at two dates for the first open house, either October thirtieth or November fourth, which would be just after the October Planning Commission meeting, so you could give us the go-ahead at that point, or, or tonight, to go ahead and try to schedule that. For that, we're thinking about doing two locations on the same day, Harson's Island, earlier in the day for some residents, and then later in the day here at Township Hall, so that would be on the same day, either October thirtieth or November fourth, looking at just two dates that might work so far before people head out of town for winter. And then the second open house will be later on in the spring, early spring, when people generally come back, so that was something that came up at the, um, leadership meeting we had earlier in the year, as far as making sure not to do those when people are gone for winter, so those are what we're looking at for the open houses. So any thoughts about that?
Because on the first page, my thought is that we're yet to be an ancient community.
So, yeah, so this is not, this is just-
That's the data.
The first look at, um, American Community Survey data, which is, which are estimates, so they're not perfect.
Sure.
And they fall between the census years, so, and they ask some questions that the census might not ask, so it does provide some good information. So, yes, so the, um, page three, population, page one, on the far left, you have the age groups, how they, this is all based on how the ACS provides us, so you have the age groups on the left, you have the two thousand twelve information, and then the most recent, two thousand seventeen, and then the changes, green being additions and red being losses. Median age, almost identical, two thousand twelve, between male and female, and two thousand seventeen, it grew a little bit on the female side from the male. It's hard, it's hard to tell what the details of these, this data is, because you're obviously just looking at the numbers, so, um, what you kind of wanna think is, does this, does this information line up with your perception of the community, or are there data points that stand out as interesting or something to look, look into further? So, this is that same information, just shown in a different, in a different way. Because they're five years apart, you'll notice that the age, because the age cohorts are five years apart, and the two thousand twelve, two thousand seventeen surveys are five years apart, ideally these bars would just move one to the right, but they're not doing that in this case, reflecting our Whitey's comment that you're getting older, that that's what this, this bar graph shows, is it's not a simple shift of the numbers to the right, but they're actually increasing as you get into the older age groups, and then going down in the twenty to thirty, thirty-nine-ish groups, so. And that also accounts for a couple of things, births, deaths, and then also moving and moving out, so there's really two parts to how your age changes, it's not just the people here are aging, it's, there aren't, there aren't new births, household sizes are going down everywhere, and then people may be moving out in certain age groups, so that's, those are the two things that dictate that. So then SNCOD also has their own projections, and this is useful for projecting into the future, which the ACS doesn't do as good of a job, so these numbers are pretty close to ACS, but they're not identical. And so on, page six, population, page four, this is that projection beyond twenty-ten. So, pretty flat, probably like a conservative estimate, and this is typical of the metro area, that we're not experiencing large, a large population influx. Income, page one, page seven, and this is something we typically include in master plans, median family income, and this is different than household income, so you'll see that in, in the next slide. So, this is based on what the ACS calls as families, so the first three, on the top left, you have families with own children of household, and then without own children of household, so, um, you'll note that it's, it's less with own children of household than it is without own children of household, which is a kind of flip between two thousand and twelve and two thousand seventeen, which is kind of interesting. Um, in two thousand twelve, that may imply that a household with, with a child may, may be, more tend to be a couple or a married couple, which would have two incomes connecting the family versus, um, without children, maybe only one couple, one house, one person and one, um, income coming in. And then, income, page two, um, page eight, this is the raw household numbers and thousands of dollars, so, for example, in the seventy-five thousand to one hundred thousand dollar median household income, you have six hundred and sixty households in two thousand twelve, and that goes down to six hundred and thirteen in two thousand seventeen. So on page nine, income, page three, on the left, you'll notice that the under eighteen poverty status is quite high in two thousand and twelve. Under that, there's a note that there's a plus minus error of two hundred and eleven children of three hundred and eighteen, so that's not really a percentage that you should think about closely, it's, it could be either ten percent or it could be thirty percent, it's not, um, it's not a reliable number for the ACS, so that's not something to focus. Unless you see that, or you perceive that in your community, it's just, there's a large margin of error with that. Page ten, this is just a way we depict the year that the house, the house was built in the community, the largest on the left, and then smaller to the right, fifty to fifty-nine, and seventy to seventy-nine being the two largest likelihoods of when your house was built. And then housing on page two, on page eleven is an interesting, this is an interesting set of numbers, is rental versus ownership, and how that's changed. You'll note that your owner occupied has dropped by nearly eighty units, while rentals have increased by a hundred and eighty units, and also, um, total units has increased by a hundred, so, people may be renting houses more as a result of the recession, and so we've seen in other communities, because you may not be seeing apartment construction or condo construction, but you're seeing rentals increase, so obviously those people are, um, living somewhere, renting somewhere. And then transportation, page one, and page twelve, page twelve is also another important land use related statistics, eighty-four percent of people drive to work alone, it's me, it was nine percent carpool or vanpool, and four percent work at home. Again, these are ACS numbers, so it's a voluntary question that goes more into the, um, information than the census might, and it might not be a perfect number, but it is interesting at least to compare, that's something we'll compare to other communities especially, that do have transit, some communities may have, for example, Rochester Hills has, I believe, eleven percent of people that work from home, so that then brings land use questions with that, so.
The figures are close?
That's, pardon?
The figures are close?
Um, there's no other source, so, we think they're pretty good, I mean, public transportation zero is probably fair to say with the, where we're at, and, I don't know, it might not, unless you feel otherwise, and this is something we can look into with their survey, but, um, yeah, it's the best information that there is. And then, this is transportation time on the last page, so, um, that's a good sign that the average travel time to work has gone down.
It hardly changed, it looks like.
Pardon?
It hardly changed, it looks like, so that's very consistent.
So we'll go into this more with the draft chapter, and we'll have then comparisons to surrounding communities, and the county and the township, and then also wanna mention that the surveys open online, I think we're around two hundred responses so far, started off kind of slow, but it's starting to build up, so that's a good sign.
Thank you very much. Anything else as a planning consultant report you wanna add?
Rob is presenting at the St. Clair County Fall Workshop on October twenty-eighth, Goodell's Park, on site plan, yep, on site, on site plan of views, and there's another session before that on resiliency, so that might be something interesting to attend.
They have a horse show there too? Well, we're there.
I'm not sure.
Is he having turkey hands quiz here too? Sure.
Don't go there.
Sorry.
I guess what I sort of like is, it doesn't look too bad, that between twelve and seventeen, the number of rented households didn't grow materially, I mean, it grew, but not that tremendously, which is, I guess, a good sign.
Well, if there's nothing else, I guess, uh, DEQ again, and we'll move on to item number nine, which is ZBA Representatives' Report.
I have no report.
Thank you, Keith. Number ten is Board Representatives' Report.
Okay, at the last board meeting, we approved resolutions concerning the, uh, change from C two to R one at nine seven zero three River Road, that went approved, and a text amendment for the small scale social clubs were approved as well.
Thank you. Also, item number eleven, Cheerperson's Report. The only thing I would remind everybody is the Codels two thousand and nineteen Fall Workshop. If you all are interested, I believe we got in our packet a form to fill out, we did with Whitey, and it'll be taken care of. Other than that, I don't really have anything, so, item number twelve is Planning Commission Members' Comments. Sounds pretty quiet right now, so I guess-
I think I made my comments during the unpretty business, so I don't wanna-
Everybody's talked out? Ed, are you talked out down there?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'll move on to item number thirteen, Public Comments. Anybody in the public who's wishing, may I see someone raising their hand, please come forward, state your name, put it over the gentleman in the back first, okay? Then you can be next.
Yep.
Name, address, and, you can just go from there. Just remember our little rules about time, okay?
Hello, my name's Keith Stein, I'm at seven eight eight nine Stark. First of all, I want to commend the board on your diligence in dealing with the Blue Horseshoe Project. Appreciate everything you're doing to make sure that that fits your requirements. I wanted to point out, however, that the delays and changes impact the public comments, and they do so because as this thing gets further delayed, people tend to go away for it the winter, and when this thing finally does come to a vote, and people here have a chance to- and people here have a chance to really give their public comments directly on that, they might not be in town. So it's something to kind of consider. As Mr. Simon mentioned, you know, we've been patient for six months and maybe it's time to suggest that these people make the project fit within the four corners of the statute and not allow them any variances. Just a thought. You know, six months of patience by the board is commendable, showing great restraint. However, one has to wonder what is causing the delay on the Blue Horseshoe side? And what protection does the community have in the event that the Blue Horseshoe folks don't have the financial backing that they need to complete the grandiose plans that they have? And they end up with a partially finished product that the township then has to absorb the cost of making sure it's safe for the community? So that's a concern that we have as well. The last point that I'd like to make is, well, I believe that it would be a prudent step to require the Blue Horseshoe folks to provide a water study to determine what 200-plus boats, plus the people that would be occupying those boats, would do to the quality of our water that is already admittedly compromised. You have oil and gas waste, you have human waste. And what that will do in a confined area is of great concern to the residents of this township. And once again, I thank you for listening to our comments and for considering everything. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Scott Clemmich. I live with my wife Whitey at 7904 Inglewood Drive. First of all, I'd like to thank the township for providing us with sand, sandbags, and all the other stuff. You guys probably don't hear it enough. We really appreciate it. It was greatly needed and greatly appreciated. The reason I'm here tonight is because I understand that the On the Rocks Tiki Bar has requested an extension on their operation times. Is that correct?
Have not heard a single word on that topic at all.
Really? I was told that there was.
I have not. I, sitting here, can honestly say I've not heard a single word about On the Rocks from anybody. And our information comes from the building department, and it's not made it to us at this level.
Okay, I was told by someone at the office that requested it made.
At our building department office?
Actually, it was clear.
You can go back to that person to ask. But unless some more of us sitting here knows more, I don't have anything that's been given to us.
I live right across it.
I know they're open.
And that comes across, and I want to come in and be a really opposed end.
No, I would encourage you go to or call the building department and ask because-
So I'd go to the building department for that?
Check the agendas online.
I'm sorry.
Check the agendas online.
I do check my line.
It'll have to be on it. It'll be on the agenda.
It will be on the agenda.
As far as it's coming in front of us, with the building department, everything goes through them first. And that's who puts our packets together for what we do like tonight.
Okay.
So that would be your first-
First stop.
First step, first stop. Either call, I mean, the agenda will show, but you can always call ahead of time and-
And I had a big spiel a few minutes too.
Did you? We'll save it for the next time. Because we have a distinctive issue we might be dealing with.
I appreciate your time.
No, thank you for coming. We appreciate the input. That's what we're here for.
Hi, my name is Karen Odom. I live on 7840 Inglewood. And our problem on our road is the Airbnb's. We have three of them. It's a small, short road, dead end to the lake. And there's three of them on there. And one house will have, sometimes they have seven, eight vehicles. And they all pull boats, you know? And there's traffic up and down the road continually. And it's just a real nuisance. And I'm just curious as to anything can be done about it.
RVs?
Airbnb's.
Oh, Airbnb's.
Yeah.
There's three of them on our street. And it's just wreak havoc, you know?
I can say this, not just your street, but in the past, we've had, from different areas of the community, I would say basically the same complaint. And the Planning Commission back in November 2018 showed to monitor the situation because we are now working on our master plan update.
I see.
To see where that's going to maybe fit into it and see what the state of Michigan is doing with rentals. Because that's another whole- That's a big part of the equation.
Right, right.
And we don't know what they're doing. At least I don't know unless Matt has it.
I've heard that Detroit has a problem with that too, and they're-
It's not just us.
Yes, right, exactly. They're taking over. For us people that are buying our homes and paying, you know, our mortgages and stuff now and insurance and whatever else, you know, taxes. And they're just like coming in and just like partying and just then they leave and just leave a mess and, you know.
I would suggest, as Eric pointed out, we're going to be having master plan meetings for the public to attend. And I think I probably even submit something in writing is that, I'm looking at your, that for some input, if you're not available to be here because of our community, being what it is.
There's some questions in the survey that-
There you go.
Are towards that. Like, are we a recreational community? Kind of broader questions, but that will help inform that part of that issue. Will you be able to come to the open house? Do you know where? There'll be one on Harson's Island.
Oh, okay.
Should be easy if you're the issue.
Where may that be?
What is the issue?
It hasn't been scheduled yet. It'll be either October 30th or November 4th.
And the online survey is open now. So if you want to participate in that, please do so.
And you can comment on that too.
There you go.
If it's parking, call the police. There is no parking in some areas.
I know, I know. They just drive on people's property and stuck onto and backing those.
I'm just saying, we're not an enforcement. We have to call the police.
We said it probably many times, we're definitely not an enforcement body. The police you can call. If it's on the water, call sheriff, whatever. We just don't, we're not that part of the system.
That's true, I know that.
I'm sorry, but that's the best answers I can give you at the moment.
Just come here with my complaint tonight too.
It's okay, it's worth the buck. Come anytime. Thank you. Anyone else? Public comments? Going once, twice? Who's in the public comments section? And Whitey, hold on a second. I'm going to go to number 14. You ready?
Move to adjourn.
There you go. All in favor? Thank you, everyone, for coming.